Alright, we're gonna call this meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everybody here, full house, we like that. Let's go ahead and have our prayer and pledge of asked Councilman Kenneth to do that.
Please rise.
Let's pray, Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer right now to thank you for another day that you have given us. We know every day is a gift of grace, knowing we don't deserve any grace or mercy from you, but you have given it anyway. And I do pray for those in the line of storms tonight, as well as over the next week, that you would be with those who would be in the path. And Lord, that those things are able to just move on without any issues. And I pray for the business tonight, that it would, Lord, that it would honor you ultimately. And I pray these things in the name of our Savior Jesus, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we got roll call please.
Lamar?
Here.
Strofsheir?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Frischiers?
Here.
Brown? Trammell?
Here.
Gauthier?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Okay, petitions from the audience, Jerry Douglas.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys, so I'm just gonna read this or I'm gonna...
No, I gotta start your timer.
Okay. How long do I have?
I've got five minutes.
I want three seconds back. I'm just gonna read it, and if you guys have any questions or anything, we'll go from there. But I just wanna thank the City Council and the prior departments for their efforts and what you guys do, we really do appreciate you. I'm certain you guys probably deal with a lot of complaints, and I wanna hope, or I hope that you truly understand where my heart is tonight, I'm not complaining. I just wanna bring some, some facts to the table, some concerns that I have as a citizen of Pryor. So, born and raised in Pryor since 1975, kinda giving away my age there, but I've seen growth and improvements in our town, I've seen some setbacks. And I've lived at fourteen hundred Clayton Road for the last eight years. So, tonight I just wanna bring a couple of issues and ask you what I can do, or maybe what our neighbors can do, or me and my neighbors, to help get a plan to go forward. So, kind of a summary, set the stage, at Fifth Street going north on North Elliott, so right at the corner of Roosevelt School going north. I know there's been a lot of issues with that road. That's where we're kinda talking about, so North Elliott Stormwater, you know, the stormwater goes in a road, I get that. In the recent twenty-four months, there was a project to enhance storm water management was executed. The results from that, from my perspective, are the water come off the road quicker, but there's still some issues there. The road floods to the center line, and I get that, from Fifth Street to Clayton. And I know it's not anything we can do tonight, but I just wanna mention that, it's something that is definitely a problem on that area of road while I've lived out there. So, the first thing I wanna talk about is the water ponding between the concrete and the asphalt transition. So, the road goes north, where it goes from concrete to asphalt is what I'm specifically talking about. Prior to the improvement, the water would pond, but it didn't stay there as long as it does now. We can get a rain event, for example, if we get one tonight, it can be two to four inches deep, it's on both sides of the road, and it literally, it's just common sense, you go out there and look, it just doesn't have anywhere to go. There's, there's nothing cut on the edges of the ditches or something to, to kinda get the water away from it, so, excuse me. So, that was, that, that's one issue. The next issue is the transition between the concrete and asphalt. It's just the best speed bump in Oklahoma, it's a really rough transition. And again, just to talk about roads and things like that, it's just extremely rough, it's very unpleasant to drive over. We're just a normal, normal family, we don't drive expensive cars and all that kinda good stuff, but there's definitely an impact to vehicles there. The third thing is the quality of the road from the transition to Fort, North 433 to, which is Gaither Road, okay? That one mile section, and I don't have a nice way to say it, it is terrible road. You cannot stay in your own lane, and that is probably the one thing that I would complain about the most, and I'm not complaining, just bringing to the attention, you just can't. That road is, it's just in bad shape. It's dangerous, it's been cold patched for years, and it's just simply not adequate for the roads that I think we should, we should be driving on in Pryor. I believe it needs to be replaced as soon as possible. Lastly, striping the road, I think giving clear dividers for drivers, it's just a simple matter of collisions and things like that. Being able to stay in your own lane, if you choose to speed or do something crazy, you know, get caught, get a ticket, that's just the way things go. But, I won't go in depth in my personal experiences at the corner and on that road, but I've had, just personally, lots of close calls. People that are texting and driving, and that happens everywhere in Oklahoma, and I get it, but a lot of it comes from you can't stay in your own lane, you're in the middle of the road, and if you do have to get over, just in a regular half-ton pickup, but there's two come at the same time, you will, somebody's gonna have to stop, get over, do something to not hit a mailbox to kinda, to try to manage through that. So, also things that have happened to me and my family, and I'm not asking for anything from the council, but we've replaced, cut tires, you know, it's just wear and tear on vehicles that I just would hope wouldn't have to be there. So, again, this, me coming tonight is just to bring up those issues from my perspective, for me and my neighbors, and to ask if there's something that we can do as a community to help, a process that we can start. Where I work every day, we're the same way, somebody brings a problem to the table, we say, hey, look, what can we do? We sit down, we try to figure out a short-term and long-term goal, that's what I'm asking for. So, with four seconds left, which you owe me three, I really appreciate your time and being able to come out and represent, thank you, for sure.
Thank you. I don't see our other petitions that were listed here tonight, so we'll carry on. Department head reports, given the storms that are coming, if you guys could just come in and do these quick, and we'll be in and out, we'll go on from there. Building inspector, had a lot of inspections, sixty-nine inspections, twenty-eight inspections of contractors, and then the normal, usual inspections. Emergency management.
Okay, real quick, we had an opportunity here a couple of weeks ago, that we found out that state had some money that they was gonna give back to FEMA if they didn't spend it. So, we talked to them and given us some money to do a individual safe room project for the county, that includes for the city of Pryor as well. Basically how it works, once we are ready to start the application process, I'll let everybody know, you will, the citizens will line up, it'll be a first come, first served. We've gotten, it looks like we're gonna have a hundred and twenty-five safe rooms we're gonna be able to put in. And pretty much what you do is you pay for the safe room yourself, have it installed, we send the paperwork in, and FEMA reimburses you seventy-five percent up to three thousand dollars. So, as soon as that's ready to kick off, which is going really quick, so it's a lot quicker than I expected, as soon as I get the go-ahead to, to start it, I will make sure and let everybody know.
Thank you. Fire? Nobody out there for the fire? How about golf?
Good evening, everyone.
Me and her up real quick, I just remember BK is at cheer camp with his daughter, he's doing daddy duty tonight, so.
You gotta do daddy.
I last minute remembered that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You gotta do daddy duty, yeah, whatever.
You know, we've had a lot of rain, everybody knows, got more rain coming, but despite all the rain, the golf course is in very good shape, it's, we've been very busy still, so we didn't quite do the numbers in May as we did last year, but it was very close with all the rain, it's really good, so won't go over all the tournaments, the ones we have coming up, Friday, we've got the Pryor Quarterback Tournament. Saturday, we have a Wendy Cup Tournament, and that is a bunch of the state people are coming up to play, so it's all state employees. So, they'll be up playing from Oklahoma City and everything, so that's kinda neat. On the tenth of June, we got the, our PGA Junior Tournament, and the six, the thirteenth of June, we got the Chamber of Commerce Tournament. And on the twenty-first, we have the Life Smart Tournament, so a lot of stuff happening, we're busy out there, everything's really good, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Library. Library's about to have a big week.
Well, yeah, this is our first full week of programming for summer reading, registration started last week. So far, we have registered two hundred and three people for our summer reading program, and that's all ages, so babies to grownups. And I encourage all of you to get registered for summer reading and get your bingo sheet and participate, 'cause it's good for us, please do that. We, our four part-timers have started and are doing really well. It is really wonderful to have enough staff, so that our full-time staff can do the things that only we can do, and our part-time staff can do the things that everyone else can do. It's really great, so thank you for that. Our kickoff is on, for summer reading is on Thursday, in the green space and in the parking lot. If it rains, we're gonna have to cancel, because we can't fit all of those people in our library. So, hoping that all the rain that might happen Thursday will stop before our event, and then...
Is that your pitch for building a bigger library?
Well, so, no, I would rather have other things before we get a bigger library, but it's on the list. We also are a food distribution place for children, we have the boxes from the Eastern, the Food Bank of Eastern Oklahoma. We got four hundred boxes yesterday, we have sixty boxes left. I wish there was not such a need, we only get boxes once a week, we aren't guaranteed boxes every week. So, I would encourage anybody who needs boxes for their kids to call first, we will run out for sure tomorrow, and then we won't get any more until next week, maybe. So, it really just depends on funding and how much staff they have and all that good stuff, so, anyway, do you have any questions for me?
I really appreciate you guys doing that, you know, when we, when we talk with our schools, and we talk with our, our entities that deal with the children, the, the safe nets and things, there is a real need for that in our community, and so, we see that with these programs, we see with Michelle and her, her, her community closet at the high school and things, and they're sharing those, those with other schools. So, definitely, thank you for being that service provider for those young ones in our community.
Yeah, we also have a bare necessities drawer for, for anybody really, but mostly for teens, and it has little snacks, it also has personal hygiene and things as well, so if you guys want to donate to that, that would be also fantastic, so, thanks so much.
Parks and Cemetery.
Well, of course, our big thing is we made it through Memorial Day, and so far, no complaints, I think everything, I think we ended up getting it looking pretty good. I was able to get one of the summer helpers prior to Memorial Day, and I did get a second one a week after, so appreciate that, that helped out a bunch. We picked up the flowers yesterday, so now it's back to just summer routine out there. Parks, man, we got a ton of projects coming up if it ever quit raining. And the major one right now is we got two of the pickleball courts down, and we're doing repairs that we'd never done before, we didn't know what we was gonna run into. And it's, it's going okay, but it's time consuming, then we have to break off and mow or, or whatever, but...
Will you briefly explain what those repairs to the pickleball thing are caused by, without pointing fingers or making anybody feel...
So, you know, that was an add-on, so it was a kit, where your core drilled down, and put sleeves and a pole, and they take them out. So, the handles are attached to those poles, so last summer, when they're playing pickleball, they're cranking down the nets. So, unlike the tennis nets, they're intersecure, and they've kinda been, these are buckling up the asphalt of the tennis court as they pull them in. And so, we're cutting out a two-by-two square on the outside and pouring concrete. But we didn't really know what we was getting into, so we found out there's much asphalt, and there's about this much thick concrete, and all the wire that we're having to chisel out to, to do it, and so... But now we've done one, and then we're pouring back concrete flush, and so we're hoping that's, you know, makes it a lot more solid. And so, we're done, we're doing the worst two for now, we've only done one hole, but now we've done one, we hope, you know, the others go a little bit quicker. But yeah, it's from then, they're tightening in the nets, and even on the two that they've already, we got up this year, they, so that'll be next. But we couldn't do it during tennis season, you know, so, so, they still have three courts that they can play on pickleball, though, so, other than that...
Thank you.
I have a question, what'd you find out about Frank Hare Park sign?
I haven't been able to, I mean, I don't know yet, I'm, I'm assuming it just got stolen, no one's...
You got the sign, bring it back.
Yeah, no one's told me, no, we took it down, so, you know, for a reason, so...
For those that don't know, the signage to Frank Hare Ballpark had been up for years and years and years, and was getting in pretty sad shape. And I asked Frank last year to get a new sign, and he installed it last year, and it's, somebody stole it this year, supposedly stole it, it's gone, and nobody knows anything about it. Brand-new sign, basically.
Guys, these are the things that prevent us from being able to do improvements to parks, when we put up good things, we do nice things, and things come up stolen. It just pushes us all that much further away from the nice things that people deserve and want, so, if you know somebody about it, or you're listening and seeing, please return it.
I have actually had that happen on Christmas flights, where they were, came up missing, and like, two years later, all of a sudden showed up. So, we figured they were in somebody's closet, and the mom found them, you get that, man.
Alright, thank you Frank. Chief, police, and animal shelter.
So, with the warmer weather, obviously it picks up in calls, kind of the major stuff that's been going on is domestics, traffic accidents, those sort of things, I mean, they're, they're daily. And the intoxicated people that we deal with, mental health issues in town, that's obviously still high, that we continue to deal with. The officers are working the OSO shift a lot, which is a grant shift for traffic, I've noticed they're making a lot of red light tickets and things, so they are out on the highway enforcing the traffics there and in residential areas. With the summer, it gives us a little bit more help with the SROs, but of course, with summer comes vacations, and there's still a couple people on, you know, leave, so... We're making do with what we got, and that's kinda what's keeping us busy right now, and on the vandalism stuff that's gonna pick up during the summer with juveniles out breaking into cars, stealing stuff from parks, there has been some things that I'm looking into as far as some of the parks that we could use, maybe some surveillance video and stuff that other areas have used. I think it would, if it was live feed, straight car cameras that we have at the PD, at the city parks and stuff like that, it would help, that we could see when they're doing it, and officer doesn't have to be there all the time, they could, you know, the dispatch would be watching them. They could go deal with the breaking into the bathrooms and the causing issues at the, you know, basketball courts wherever, so, there are some things that we're looking into on our end to try to help with that. Animal Control's not here, she's on vacation, but they are busy, I think their calls just keep going up and up and up, and the shelter's full. Luckily, we got another hand coming on soon to help with that, but as soon as they get one out, three come in, it's just that time of year when they're extremely busy. Any questions for me?
Their need of foster homes for their new animals, so, if you got room, taking a pet.
Does anybody need an armadillo?
I don't need an armadillo. Rec, excuse Mike, he's at, I believe, a graduation right now, one of his children, I'll go through his report really quick, he's very detailed, so we will skim through this. Maintenance, they've got some bids going for the new AC unit, the HVAC unit in the gymnasium, they, they put new flooring in the elevator, they're getting estimates for a lean-to over the pool heater, caged over the CO2 inlet, and some other things that they've gotta repair due to some vandalism that they've seen. Memberships, hundred and five new memberships, thirty-two new Cherokee members, five hundred and seventy-five total Cherokee members, four hundred and sixty-seven walkers, total date passes, one thousand two hundred and forty-three child watch, weight room, fitness, pool, basketball, pool and basketball, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one total members, that's up three hundred and thirty compared to last year at this time. All kinds of activities and things going on, summer swim hours started May twenty-eighth, attendance has been pretty steady, pool parties are up, team public, five private, fifty kids signed up for individual summer swim lessons, eleven signed up for summer group swim lessons, and they hosted Bradford School and Osage School for a day, swim per day. Again, Katie and Kim are staying busy with the fitness and the, the programs there, just trying to increase their, their activities with some Facebook and Instagram posts. Class participation, overall land class average is up seven point one-two to seven point five-two, with the exception of evening yoga class. Water classes are slightly down, six point seven to six point two average, Jess is consistently examining and making adjustments to monthly to accommodate members. Alright, street. Sorry, just fly through that.
Of course, I know y'all ain't even wanna hear about rain and stuff, but yeah, we have had rain, but we finally got to pour that concrete out there on North Elliott, I mean, that's where it was sitting at, and again, you know, that's where all the water runs down, as he was talking about tonight. Just FYI, we looked at that, oh, probably about ten years ago, and it was gonna, to run an underground drainage down through there, it was gonna be somewhere around three hundred and fifty thousand. You know, price has probably gone up since then, but that's putting drop-ins, and the drop-ins would be over on the east side of the road, 'cause on the west side of the, side of the road is where all the utilities, electric and water and everything. So, you really wouldn't be able to, I mean, utilities, you know, of course Jared's here, but yeah, you'd have to move all that to be able to dig to put everything in, so it just, that was just gonna be on one side. We had a large tree over on North Elliott, drainage down through there, beaver went in, took a, took a tree out, or almost out, he'd chewed it halfway through, it was, I don't know.
Three-foot round?
Yeah.
Something like that, we went and got rid of that today, ground finally got dry enough where we could get in there without getting stuck, and got that removed.
Take care of that beaver?
We've tried, we've tried.
You haven't tried...
Is it inside the city limits?
You haven't tried...
I've had a game of working out there and everything.
Chris, respectfully, you haven't tried the Bruce two thousand? Saying?
Hey, listen, I've been working outside the city limits, too. I've had game of working out there, there were traps, and they, they couldn't get it.
Alright, sorry, buddy.
It's alright, he's a special beaver, he's, he's kinda one of them covert. We've done some asphalt patching, what we can, when they make it out there, especially there on, on Kawayo Street, we finally got that one. There was a manhole, we got that one fixed, the drainage pipe on North Whittaker, we got, we had to go through, we had to call in on a couple drives, or the ditches through there standing water. We went shooting, shot great on that, and the ditches are basically as, as deep as you can go, you go any deeper, that's, it's, it's really gonna hold water, and the problem is, again, people raking stuff out in the ditches, they're bringing, I mean, whether, when they put their trash out through there, if it's not picked up properly, we went over and took our pipe router over there, and we, we routed out four or five pipes, and there, there was trash and toys and leaves and everything in through there. But, we'll look in the morning, if we get the rain tonight, we can at least find out if it's going to, if that's the, the problem. Of course, again, in that area, it's so flat, again, it's kinda hard to get everything to flow. Sweeper, we got it back, I found out the reason why it took us a long to get that back and get it fixed is the guy that, that was worked and ordered parts, he quit. So, he didn't tell anybody else about it. So, once they got in there, they called us up and said, hey, you know, we see this here about your, this sweeper out here, what's the deal with that? It's the way you're supposed to get the brake boosters for us, so the guy that done that, he, he, he got online, found them, ordered them, and got them, and we had them within, I think it was three weeks. So, we're trying to run the sweeper when we can, we've been doing our mowing, trimming, I mean, again, when we can do that. We dipped some ditches over on Southeast Seventh, we cut some shoulders and stuff over there, and the water was standing in the street. Tree on Southwest Ninth, fell over on about Midways Down, we, we went through and cut that up and got rid of that. Repaired, there was a metal walkway over by Station Two on Fire Department, the trucks going in and out down at the, for the high school, they've been driving over the edge of it, cutting it short, and we got it repaired back, where hopefully it'll stay that way for a while. Again, I know we've got potholes out there, but until, like I said, until we get, get some drier weather, water on top, water underneath the street, it, it just didn't, it doesn't last very long. 'Cause I've got a list made up that we're gonna go around and mill down, and then actually put asphalt in it when, when it's available. But again, with the water, you know, we just, just people, they just listen, just quit blowing things out, putting everything out into the ditch, that's why we're having a lot of our, our drainage problems on, on certain ends of town, so... But other than that, we're, we're staying, staying busy, I mean, that's...
I have one question, it's not your problem, but maybe you've got some information on it.
Okay.
Old Highway twenty, the cemetery, they ever gonna fix that, or are you, are you information on it, or even...
Okay, yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, yeah, I got, I got an email that said that somebody had put gasoline in all their diesel equipment down there, and it messed all their, their equipment up. I think that's what it...
Buddy, you want me to...
Yeah, yeah, if you wanna read that, that's...
Guys are okay with this, related to your question about that, I'm gonna take a minute to go down a rabbit hole to answer that. So, we've had some situations with the Highway twenty street project, this overlay project, I wanna, I wanna be very clear, and I'm gonna be very pointed, and hopefully I don't offend anybody when I say this, but, you know, this is a project that was slated to be done April third, Terry, I'll get you all the information, I'll, I'll send it to you, bud. April third, when we did our construction contract with them, the agreement was that the liquidation date would be April third. What that means is any date after that, they're to pay the city five hundred dollars a day for not being done with that project. I think when we added it up, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars already that they owe us, on top of that. The delays, the babysitting that we've had to do, we've had an engineer, Michael, who works for Infrastructure Solutions out there every day, even when they're not, reporting back, nobody's here today. Glover and Associates, the company that, that was hired to do that, that we have that contract with, is well aware of everything that we've done. If you recall, a few weeks ago, I believe it was around the beginning of May, we sent them a seven-day letter. That seven-day letter says, you got seven days to do this, get this project started, or we're contacting the bonding company and we're gonna rebid the bid. On day six, they started cutting our road. So, the conversation was, they've started, we let them go, we, we let them, them work on that project, we had high hopes that they would actually get on it. They came back with some jargon about ODOT gives them grace for weather days, and so they needed more time, they needed more time, then they had to work on another project in Wagner. Then we found out they didn't take them to Wagner, they pulled people from their Wagner and Pryor job to go work on a bigger job in Tulsa, that was a lower priority. Then they told us they didn't have the oil that they needed to put down in order to lay the asphalt, and then they told us that they didn't have the fabric that needed to go on top of that to put down. Then they didn't have permits to move the machines, and then they didn't have, yeah, Autumn's over here with her jaw on the floor. Anybody that does construction knows, these are all things that need to be in place immediately before you start. Then we got some more weather, then we had delays and then we had more delay. Meanwhile, I want to be very clear, every day Dale with infrastructure and I have been talking on the phone, Michael, Buddy. We go back and forth about what's the status today, where are we at, what's going on, send them a letter. Chase has been involved in quite a bit of this, letters back and forth legally saying, get it done. Last week, we get notified that there has been sabotage to their equipment. And that all of their equipment that is out at the soccer complex that runs on diesel was filled with gasoline. So we thought, okay, this is another Glover and Associates thing to buy some time. And then we find out that Glover and Associates, that's H and G formerly, Glover and Hornbuckle, what is it, Hornbuck, whatever, have had a little beef among themselves and they've split their partnership. And Glover is claiming that Hornbuckle is the one that put the gasoline in the equipment. And thus that equipment can't be moved to do anything and it's sitting on our property. When I went by yesterday, I noticed that that oil truck that they couldn't get that's up there is leaking oil all over our driveway. So they sent somebody up to cap that oil leak. That oil leak now has a rubber glove over it and a five gallon bucket and they kicked rocks over the stuff that's there. That's not gonna be okay with us. Just because it looks that way and that was their response does not mean that that's what we're gonna be complacent with. They have to fix that, that's an environmental problem. They have to get our road done. So I apologize that this is taking so long and that it's miserable. But please don't for one minute think that there's been one day go by where Mayor Doyle's blood pressure hasn't gone to the roof and very inappropriate words have been said. I am on it every day. And those of you that know me are nodding your heads going, yep. Councilman Brashears texts me about every other day, what's going on? And I say, this is where we're at. Right now, we're in a legal holding spot with this. And we are acting to the, to the direction of Mr. McBride and Mr. Burke with infrastructure. They are a day and a half worth of work away from being done with that project. So we're on it and to that I apologize. Bruce, I hope that answers your question.
Well, I kind of knew the answer when I asked you. But you left out the inferior material they put in the hole once they finally dug the hole and patched.
They did have to go back and fix some things. And that's part of why we put Michael out there with infrastructure. He works for our engineer and that was part of the contract they knew. As I've gone out there, Michael has been out there checking the temperature of the asphalt with, with the appropriate laser tools. He's checking the depth and anything that they did mess up, he made them redo. So you may see some markings on the road, I've confirmed that those markings are places that were repaired and, and are up to standard, they're just marked. They've taken plenty of pictures on our behalf, we'll get this done. But we're having to flex pretty hard to get there, so.
So how long before they restart?
I'll get back to you on that.
The equipment's broke or damaged.
I was very clear this morning when I called Dale, we have Freedom Fest in less than four weeks. And it has to be done and that equipment has to be out of there and the leak has to be cleaned up. I don't need gas and diesel and oil sitting on the ground where we're gonna have thirty minutes of explosives. It has to be, there's no exceptions. So that's where we're at. So to that, I can't be any more clear or transparent about how frustrating this has been that this company, when we went back last time we met and we talked about this, I think in the street committee, Mr. Lamar, am I correct? We talked about the encouragement, and I would encourage this to the entire community of Pryor, do not take a job with this company. Do not think that it's okay. The county approached us afterwards, we've had issues in the past. It's my desire to not see them after they finish our project. I don't want them back. This has been a nightmare, so.
Does the state have a list that we, that they keep of these contractors who just don't comply? Are you aware of anything?
That might be a Dale question and I can ask him that. Because I promise we'll be talking in the morning.
Well, based on the track record that they have with us so far, which has been very crappy.
Yep.
Are we assuming and are we being confident that we're gonna let them finish this job and that they're gonna do it properly and correctly? Or is it just gonna be done haphazardly and we're gonna have a crappy road that we'll have to deal with here later?
Everything that they're doing is being monitored closely by infrastructure, that's what Michael's job is and he's out there. I, I know some of the people, Jeremy Cantrell, he, he he has a driveway that's right there, we even talked about that today. And a lot of times Michael approaches these homeowners and he parks his car in their driveway so that he can be right at the work site. And I'm telling you, when they're blocking traffic and they're doing it the wrong way, Michael is out there telling them to stop, stop doing that. So I don't, I'm not worried about the inferiority of the work, he'll make sure that that's right, that's what we're paying him to do. He's on our side. What I am concerned about is how long it's gonna take for them to figure out who put the diesel in their machine and how many rain days they need and things like that.
When they, when they, when they give you the excuse that, that O dot gives us blah, blah, blah extension, well, do they not, do they realize that this isn't an O dot job? It's a city of Pryor job and not O dot?
It has to do with O dot's rules on road work. So Dale's confirmed those are legit things, but we're at that point where Dale is trying to figure out the best way to handle it going forward. Again, we rope chase into this just about every chance we get. Letters back and forth are being handled and so it is, it isn't, I don't want to say a holding pattern, but.
Well, I just want to say one thing and I don't, and I'm not gonna go down another rabbit track because it's not for here and now. But we had a major construction project a couple of years ago that was one of the biggest screw ups the city has ever had before. And we knew it and we let them continue and then we had a crappy building and we did zero about trying to recover damages from the contractor about it. So I just want this group to realize that, that we've been burned once on another huge job and that if we're gonna get burned by these people, we need to follow up and make them stand correct in whatever for.
So I agree, the, the point is, is that we have to figure out where we stand legally in terms of going after the bond and telling them, I do know that they've, they have already submitted one pay up and Dale rejected that and said, you haven't done enough to be paid.
Mr. Mayor, I am concerned as you are. I just want them to know they better get their stuff off that soccer field with enough time for us to do what we gotta do.
Trust me, they've been told. So, and I'll turn this back to Buddy because I didn't want to, I'm with you, but I just want everybody to be, be aware that we are not going to let this just be a haphazard road project. If, if we find that we get to that point where we've covered all of our bases and we're good, we, we may have to rebid out that part of the project, Buddy, so. But we're not to the point where that's, that's the decision we know that we can do right now. So it's all yours.
No, that's, that's fine, like I said, I, I knew in the beginning, you know, it just, the trouble we had before. Sometimes going with the cheapest bid is not always, always the best interest sometimes with that. But is the only other thing is on Clayton Road?
Clayton Road is put on for overlay, it's been on for several years, but it's, we turned over to engineers and then they come drive around and they decide deemed necessary. But it's, it's back on again, I have two roads, Dogtown Road and Clayton Road is the two that better be put on this year. Period. I mean, that's, and that other one, that's just a speed bump right now, there's so people down around that corner.
Buddy, it's the best speed bump in Oklahoma, that's what he said.
Because if we fix that one speed bump that you're talking about, then you have other neighbors that's gonna want it back.
All right.
Can we patent that?
All right. Let's, let's, let's move on from our, thank you for the healthy conversation, guys, I appreciate that. We appreciate our department heads and what they do. I'm gonna kind of break routine for purposes that are, are caused. We're gonna go to item six, the city attorney's report, we're gonna knock those items out right now. So on the city attorney's report, item A, discussion of possible action regarding a resolution accepting Mays County Connected Safety Action Plan presented by Ariana Dare, Dare, sorry. On behalf of the Mays County Trails Alliance.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Choya and a second from Lori.
Awesome, thank you all for having me, I won't take up much time. I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page because this has been a project ongoing since 2022. I know most of you guys have been here, but just to make sure the public and everyone's on the same page. Back in 2022, a federal grant became available called the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant. And it was an eighty percent, eighty twenty match, so the community had to raise twenty percent. So the Trails Alliance became aware of the grant and presented it on, to Mays County, so the commissioners could be the lead applicant for the grant. And the Trails Alliance did the due diligence to raise that twenty percent match. So several communities actually gave, and schools and private businesses, Mid America and some others also gave to that twenty percent match. And so in 2022, the city of Pryor actually contributed ten thousand dollars to that match. And so I want to thank you for that, we finally see the fruit of that contribution.
I have to interrupt you for a second, can we stop this conversation out there?
Are we gonna close?
No, we have to leave the doors open.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Beth, go ahead.
No, it's all good, thank you Charles.
I think we're all trying to figure out the best way to approach that.
Yeah.
Thank you, all right.
We got a bigger sign or something. And so whenever, so what this grant did was it funds a safety comprehensive action plan, which was gonna open doors to implementation funding. So when we applied for the grant, we actually wrote it creatively that it would include that comprehensive safety action plan in addition to a safe routes to school plan. Because as you know, a lot of our schools in the county are on highways with narrow shoulders. It's not necessarily the case for Pryor, but Pryor was absolutely included in that safe routes to school plan. And then it also updated the countywide trails plan because there were some tweaks that needed to take place there. And so in 2023, the county was awarded the grant and Grand Gateway actually was the, the reporter on that. It was a strong, we were able to hire Olson, it's a consulting group that took care of implementing the actual planning process to create the plans. In addition, with a strong partnership with Mays County Hope and of course the Trails Alliance. And so through that planning process, there was a steering committee that was set that Lori Bradshaw sat on. There were surveys distributed, there were community open houses that the community could come get feedback and we could hear from the community what their priorities are. Because we very much wanted it to be a community owned, community informed plan. And so, and stakeholder, stakeholder interviews took place too. And so we saw a lot of people in this room at the community open houses, so I want to thank you guys for your time and support on that. And so today you have before you in your packet a resolution. And the reason why we're asking for it to be formally adopted by the city is because it really just strengthens the plans. As you all may know, grant applications often require, they'll explicitly ask, is this project a part of the plan? And so if we can show that you, that this entity has formally adopted it, it just shows the collaborative effort regionally in the county and also locally, a gift to the schools. I know at the county, they were, they were concerned that a, a lot of this stuff is in city jurisdiction. And the truth of the matter is, the county, the comprehensive safety action plan really has a lot of crash data that's in the whole county, but also in the local jurisdictions. And so that data is gonna also beef up grant applications, score them higher. And then, of course, it's a really gift to the schools that we can have that safe routes to school plan. And they're, all the schools were very much involved in the planning and got to give feedback for that too. So from my understanding, I'm not an attorney, but it doesn't, let me know if I'm wrong, Chase, but it doesn't require you guys to like budget money towards this plan to make sure that happens. It's really just a formal, you're in support of, and as grant applications come down the pike, you guys have shown your support through the whole way and we can go forward with those grant applications. So, any questions?
Question?
Yes.
What are you talking about? Good speech and I like it, but is this basically we're gonna put bicycle trails over Mays County?
So you may not know, but the county actually has a countywide trail master plan. And so what that does is it connects all the county towns together through a trail system, a multi-use trail system. And so what that looks like is it could be off-road trails, it could be share the road. It doesn't require that the county does it, but there are entities in the town that, and in the community that want to see something like that happen for multiple reasons. One of the reasons being the industrial park, they actually have their own active transportation plan that's included, all, all connected in this. As you all know, as we want to bring workforce into the community to raise sales tax around here, we really want to increase our quality of life. And so younger families are actually looking for things like this, things like trails to want to move here. And so that's really the intent behind the trails. But our heart for this plan is to really take care of the schools. There are, there are students that have to walk and bike to school. We've pitched it to some people and they're like, well, we don't want to encourage the kids to bike and walk because it's dangerous. Well, the truth of the matter is, there are kids who have no choice. And so we really, it's, it's a safety thing as well. In addition to the increasing quality of life, it's also a safety measure to protect the people who have no choice but to walk or bike. Especially on South Elliot, as you guys know, there's no shoulder on there. I go to church on that road, I'm often on that road and see cyclists traveling to and from to work on industrial park. So it's really safety. So to answer your question, the plans do talk about building trails, but as we go forward in implementation, it'll be strategic as far as what trails we go after. You know what I'm saying, as far as priorities?
There was some negative thoughts on this when it started several years ago. And you're gonna end up having them people's land to lay these trails down.
Adverse possession.
Across Elliot, huh?
Adverse possession.
Yeah. And that was some negative things that I remember, it kind of died down, that's kind of backed up.
Right.
Kid, there are some that ride bicycles to work, I live on Elliot, so I don't know if you can come by there, there's not that many of your son. They're taking their life in their own hands.
Right.
That's what driving hard is. Yeah, that's, that's the thing, I think Rogers County was implementing this and it's gonna tie in with Mays County and it got to be quite a big thing more than just a bicycle.
So.
That's what scared me on it.
Right, and I understand, I appreciate you bringing that up. I have not been involved, I have heard also the talks of this. From my understanding, I'm not a, I don't have any attorney experience though. That a lot of the trails that we're, we're suggesting are on public right of way. And so it's already, so of course, there's some public right of way that goes into people's houses and stuff. I don't, I believe that's not the majority of the plan, you guys were all sent to the plan. The Mays County Trails Master Plan has been a thing for many years as well, open to the public. And so as I said, it is on public right of way, for those who have houses on public right of way, it would be a process that they would have, it would, they'd get, oh gosh, what's the word I'm looking for, they would get paid for acquisition? No, not acquisition.
Adverse possession.
Eminent domain.
It wouldn't be, no, they would be compensated, I, actually, I'm not even gonna act like I know, to be honest. I don't, I'm not sure of that, what I do know is the majority of these plans are on public right of way. And so it's the jurisdiction of public entities anyways. And for those who are upset, please plan a seed, this actually will increase their property value. So whenever they do ever go to sell their house, it's actually a huge win for communities to have quality of life initiatives like this. So, but also, in addition to the trails, I want to make sure this is very clear, this is three plans. The comprehensive safety action plan has nothing to do with adding trails. It has to do with, it's the data, the proof, evidence that there has been fatalities, that there's been specific accidents, so that's the one plan. The next plan is a safe routes to school plan. Some of that, yes, does include trails, it also includes upgraded crosswalks, upgraded lighting that does pedestrian heads. And then, of course, the Mays County Master Trails Plan, that's always been in existence, well, not always, but I think it's like since 2016, I want to say.
Is that the one that they had over at the industrial park? That's the Mays County one that they had on display over there?
So yeah, that's part of it. And so that, what's really exciting about this to you guys is it really is a collaborative effort. As I said, the, as Mid America has their own active transfer, active transportation plan that ties into this, the county has the plan. As you all know, you all live in Pryor, there's the existing bike route system, that's the share of the road symbols. And so it really is to, and I agree, people are taking their lives in their own hands, but as a city and city officials, we care about those constituents as well.
These will be controlled at least.
So it really is up to the jurisdiction, so whatever, so like, for example, coming down the pike, there's grants that we want to apply for upgraded traffic signals that will have like pedestrian heads and that's city owned property, so that would be up to the city. So it really just depends which jurisdiction of which project you're talking about. But it would be the jurisdiction, the municipality, the county, whatever the project is in that jurisdiction.
Ariana, I know that this has been in the works for years.
Yes.
And things will get done and then it kind of goes into a law. And things will get done and then it kind of goes into a lull for why this came up, the safety thing. So to explain to them and the public, or to us in the public, what, can you kind of just talk briefly about the phases of this plan? So like this safety plan thing is done now. What's, where's this plan go in phases to implement it and how it would be paid for?
Thank you for your question, Terry. Okay, so in this plan, it's not explicit with phases. Like you would see, for example, in the streetscape plan. The reason why is because funding only becomes available, whether that's federal funding, that's TSET funding, state funding. And each funding source requires different things. So for example, there's a grant coming up that it has to be, whoever's applying for this grant needs, the land or the right-of-way needs to be owned by that jurisdiction, the lead applicant. And so phases-wise, that's where, why I would love for you guys to be engaged in the Mays County Trails Alliance. Because this is where we talk about these types of things of, hey, this grant's coming down the pike. Let's strategize together of what project is prioritized or necessary to go after. And so to answer your question, Terry, it's not as, it's not super explicit to say, these are the phases we're going after. It's really project-specific based on the funding available. Because our heart, I will say though, other, I am learning that some cities actually save to get these things done. Our route is, you know, we're trying to get grant funding, so it's publicly funded through public dollars or TSET dollars is not, is not tax dollars. So I want to make that clear too. We're not trying to go after people's tax money to make this happen. And honestly, we're not, my heart, of course, is to see the whole thing get done. But priority-wise, it's the safety of people who are actively using transportation, using active transportation.
I would assume that in these planning meetings that you're having for it, that you all are kind of talking about how the federal government is starting to shut down a lot of grants and such, and surely that's a concern of yours too.
Well, yeah, there is, there are, yeah, some funding isn't going to be available and that kind of slows down the progress. But there are other funding entities out there that have nothing to do with the feds that we're trying to go after. And I do also want to make it clear, when you go to the Trails Alliance meetings, we don't, it's more of like, we're updating you of what grants are coming down the pike. And if you want to be a part of those strategic conversations, there's a separate group that gets together, but that's open to anybody. But we want to, we, as you know, if you've attended a Trails Alliance meeting, we keep it an hour sharp because we don't like to waste people's time. So we get into the weeds of these conversations in a different room that anybody can be invited to. But you find out about those meetings at the Trails Alliance meetings, which happen quarterly.
So part of your grant requirements probably is to fill the square on the checklist tonight for us to at least approve and endorse this safety plan, which was very well done. And very in-depth on that. So this is just another check in the box.
Yes.
For the process that's still ongoing for maybe several more years.
Absolutely, yeah. So if you, some grants, like I mentioned earlier, do explicitly say, is this project a part of a plan? And if you're, if you're not familiar with grants, they often have rubrics of, you get scored if you have this criteria, this criteria. And so if we are able to be able to just check that box, it does give us higher points to actually get this funding to become available to us. And I, and I want to say, it really is economic development. I understand people's concern with the eminent domain. I think there's some mixed messaging out there. That absolutely is not anybody's intent with these projects. Our intent is, number one, the safety of our community of all, all income levels, if you can afford a car or not. All, you know, all of that. Safety is number one priority, but also quality of life is a second priority, which of course, is how we're going to increase our sales tax by getting more people to come. And as you guys know, Damn Jam is a big thing that brings lots of hundreds of cyclists. If we can have safer infrastructure for that, those people practice and train throughout the years for things like that. And so that's bringing even more people. It's even a tourism effort as well, to get people in our community to spend money.
I've got one more question.
Yes.
That do all of the stakeholders in this, the other municipalities of the county, the industrial parks, et cetera, are all of them having to also endorse this safety plan?
So yes, Mays County Hope Harper's in the room, and of course, you guys know Marty Schneider. They're taking the lead on the other communities. Because this is my volunteer gig, y'all. So I'm here, I told him I'd take this because they thought there would be some hard-hitting questions like this. But yes, to answer your question, all entities, all the municipalities in the county, and then of course, the county are, we're asking them to formally adopt a resolution to again, show the collaborative support that is formally supported and we can go forward and get those higher points on grant applications.
When, when does this resolution need it?
To be honest, there's no super rush.
Because I would, I would love to read that plan. I didn't get it yet. I would love to read that plan. I didn't know it was there. I didn't know it was seen in the back. You actually did get it. We all got it. But my, I'm not on my city email.
Right, that's understandable.
We're not going to slow the city progress down because you're not reading your emails.
I, I got three or four emails. I understand, man. So it's all good. It's up to you guys if you want to wait or not.
I know, as we've, as I've said in quite a few of these Trails Alliance meetings, that I can make, right?
Yes. And thank you for that, by the way.
A lot of the discussion is, is directed at the safe routes for schools. How to get, one of the big concerns that we've talked a lot about, and it'll come up, you know, as we move forward here, getting people across the highway.
Yes.
Whether it's on a bike, whether it's walking. Many of you know, we've, we have championed and I have, I have fought and fought and fought for the upgrades to the lights on Highway 69. There's still a lot going on there. There's a lot of movement on that finally in the last couple of months. But one of those is to put what we call a PED Ed, so a pedestrian crossing, that's that, that signal. There is one, but it's not very effective. And the idea is finding a way through these trails and through the trailer, how to get people to where they can safely cross Highway 69. And part of that element is, we have to slow them down. We have to make sure the trucks are stopping. We have to make sure all of that's technology-based anymore. It's, you know, common sense is out the door with some of these people coming through. But the idea is, all of those are layers of an onion. But once we get them across, the kids that are walking from the west side to the schools on the east side that don't have transportation, a lot of those trails, the sidewalks, we talk about where can we put sidewalks? One of the areas that's been talked about is, as you're heading out to the east, the sidewalks stop about at Farm Bureau. And there's a lot of kids that live on the east side that can't get to that, but the sidewalks also aren't on the south side of Highway 20. So there, or places on Elliott that are missing sidewalks that kids need to walk or through like Irving and Bryant Street, there's no sidewalks there. And, and it's really about safety to the schools. And also an element of that is the recreational side of the trails. People are, as we talk to developers and business people and guys that are looking at building homes, they're saying, what kind of recreational activities do you have for these younger generations that aren't buying homes, they're renting homes, they want the active lifestyles, they're doing these things, they want this. What do you have for them? So it's, it's a collaborative effort. It's not saying that if we approve this, we're, we're putting a trail here, we're putting a trail here. This is, we're on board with making sure that we have safe, safe paths and avenues for people as well as continuing to work on the recreational side of life for that economic development piece. And so.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Zach. And just to piggyback on that, as you guys know, we do have an existing bike route system in this city. And with that, the city of Pryor approved, along with funding from the Pryor Economic Development Trust Authority, funding from the local TSET Healthy Living Program to put those wayfinding signage that you can find at the library, the trailer park, the parks, the rec center and several other strategic locations. And what that's doing is showing people a safe way to ride bikes, whether it's for active transportation, whether it's for a recreational family bike ride. But it does say on that sign, if you're on the west side to cross safely, there's a specific intersection. And so all of this is just beefing up our opportunities, giving us a greater opportunity to get land funding if we can show that there has been formal support through all these different entities, all these different groups. So, but what I say that to say, there's already existing things there that still need improvement. And this is a way to help make those improvements happen.
I didn't get to attend near as many meetings as I wanted, but it was impressive that you got so many of the different Mays County schools there and putting their input. And it was kind of eye-opening how many of these smaller schools in our county and the highways they do have to, I mean, it was very eye-opening, so it's not, I mean, it's bigger than even Pryor, right? This isn't a Mays County deal. And I thought that was impressive, how many people were there in that meeting. That was really good job by you guys.
Yeah, thank you for that, Lori. And that's major shout-out to Mays County Hope for their relationships in the schools in the county. So I appreciate that, Lori. Thank you.
Ariana, I will add that I did not read the entire safety report, but I did skim a lot. I did read the highlights of it and it was awesome work, whoever did on that, to at least come up with a comprehensive safety plan around the whole county of accidents. Some of the questions that some of you all have had in the past about traffic wrecks and such at Highway 69 and 69A, everything is all in the graphics on all that reports. And it was an awesome job that you all did do to identify all the safety problems, so.
Awesome, yes, thank you.
It's a, it's a good tool.
Yes, thank you so much for that, Terry.
Are there further discussion on this? We'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Mark?
Yes.
Chopshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Caffier?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Thank you guys so much for your time and your support.
All right. Discussion and possible action regarding a resolution regarding the use and allocation of the hotel motel tax revenues.
Motion.
I have a motion from Rashir.
Second.
A second from Trammell. I want to let everybody know that this afternoon, I was handed at 4:15, an email from Jay that we got from a gentleman named David Francis. David Francis works with the Tax Commission. Let me make sure I'm looking, yes, so this is talking about the, the verbiage that we have in that. Make sure I'm right. Nope, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. That'll be the next, the next one. Discussion on the hotel motel tax revenues. The use and allocation of, this will be your resolution.
Mayor, I don't have a good thought, you brought it. What was the percentages that was going to each?
Um, those were, and there was actually an error on those.
That's what I thought. It was 110%.
Yeah, it came up 110%.
Or just dedicated.
Or, hang on.
150% was supposed to go into something.
Let me find that.
It's on page 46.
Okay, I was on 45. Thank you. Um, so what it has here is 40% of the available, so back up a little bit. As we look at the resolution regarding the hotel motel tax revenues and where that has historically gone, what has been done, we identified that the, that the, the resolution was a little dated. It was a little out of date. There were some things on there that needed to be changed, some allocations, some wording. And so the encouragement to the hotel motel board was to look at that, review that, discuss that, and make any changes that they want. To be clear, that that is a board established that does not include council members or the mayor for a reason. This is funds that are used to promote and foster tourism, conventions, special events, et cetera, trade shows, so on. So what was, what was done was, we put out the, the suggestion was made for a couple of changes. One, an allocation of 40% of available funding for the promotion of City of Pryor Creek through the local Chamber of Commerce to support events sponsored by the Pryor area chambers of commerce. An allocation of 10% funding to the Pryor Main Street program for the city of Pryor Creek under the Oklahoma Main Street. An allocation of 10% to support of special events hosted by Pryor Public Schools is determined by the Pryor Public Schools Board. An allocation of 50%, and Houston Craig, I believe that's supposed to be 40, correct? That's the one that's over.
It's adding up to 110%.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We got somewhere on there. So what I'm going to, go ahead. You can come up. So Dean is the chair of that board as well, so if you need to pull him in, we can.
Yeah. So in that meeting that we had, the hotel motel tax, the original was 40% to the chamber, 20% to the schools, 10% to the Main Street program. And then the rest was put into the allocated pot for grants. And in that meeting, it was decided, the new resolution was, is that would take the 20% away from the schools. 10% was still remained at the chamber, at the Main Street, and 40% still at the chamber. And then that 20% taken from schools would be added more to that pot to make it. And then we're going to, now let Dean speak to this, but they have another, they're going to take some of that money and put it aside to use for matching grants. I'll go ahead and I'll let you.
So let's first talk about the allocations. Let's give the council the correct allocation.
Okay, so then, once that was made, I, I stood up and said that the chamber would reduce theirs from 40% to 30% so that the schools could still keep 10%. Based off of what was told to us that night, what they use that money for. By law, they can't use it out of their general fund for the things they use it for. So I felt in order to keep a good relationship with the school, and I felt like that that money can still be used to do what they wanted. It's only, it's half, so they took a 10% cut. I took up into 10% cut.
Okay, so we've got, just to be clear.
Yeah.
We've got 30.
It should be 30%.
30% to the chamber, 10% to Main Street, 10% to Pryor Public Schools. And the remaining balance is an allocation of available funding to be disposited into separate account and allocated by the hotel motel board through the application process established for fostering conventions, tourism, marketing in City of Pryor, assisting with the promotion, supporting community events, activities. Capital improvements to new or existing facilities to promote tourism, special projects as deemed appropriate by the hotel motel board. The except, expectations for the board should be to increase this fund balance each year until an opportunity arises to contribute to a capital improvement that will have long-term tourism benefit for the city of Pryor. So that's what that remaining balance is for. The other change that was made to this is that the hotel motel board would like to introduce a tier program into how the applicants are selected or, or considered. I'm going to let Dean explain that. And Dean, explain your tier one, tier two, tier three concept to the council and then whatever questions they have on that.
Yeah, so when I joined the hotel motel board, we kind of didn't have any grounds to say no to anyone because everything we had presented to us sounded like a good idea. So, and we were spending all the money we got every year up to the max. So we weren't holding back anything to save for things bigger, so that's why we changed the allocations. To try to be able to hold some back, to be able to help with matching grants when they came up for things, when opportunity arrives to make more of a long-term impact rather than just spending everything $2,000, $3,000 every year to things that might be able to get by without using it. So that was, that was the concept that we were trying to do with the percentage changes. The tier was kind of trying to give us a reason to be skeptical of things that were brought before us to try to make a better use of the money. So we established that tier one is mostly a local event that's a one-night thing. It's not really going to bring in people staying overnight. It might create traffic for Pryor that night. And that might still be something we want to help. But we'd let them know kind of in advance with this tier system that they're, they kind of have it up against them whenever they apply, that they need to show us that the money's going to be used well. It's going to be a good use of the monies versus some of these other opportunities that we have that come up. So tier, tier two is a one-night event that's more a regional draw that will draw people from out of town, that will generate sales tax for Pryor that we probably wouldn't have gotten otherwise. So it's a, it's a larger audience, a better use of the money, more bang for your buck with a tier two. So then a tier three is kind of the projects that we really want, that we're really looking for. The multi-night events that draw people from outside Pryor to stay in Pryor, to spend money while they're here, hopefully stay in our hotels and generate more hotel motel tax. So we're kind of trying to get the applicants to pick their tier whenever they apply so they know that where their likelihood is and what they need to do to prove to us that they're going to spend the money better.
Any questions on that?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the reason behind why you were wanting to change the percentages to the chamber, Main Street and schools? Why cut the schools out of their whole full 20%? What was the reason? What was the thinking about why that should be cut?
Yeah, the reasoning is, for me was that what we saw presented by the schools as the use of the funds wasn't really drawing people to Pryor outside of things that were already happening. So we were being used to supply hospitality rooms for the Pryor tournament, which has been going for however. So we were being used to supply hospitality rooms for the Prior Tournament, which has been going for however many years. You know, it's a big draw. It is a big draw, but we didn't see where the hotel motel board money was adding to that draw. So this, by the ordinance of the town, I think this is intended to be used to increase, to bring in things that increase the sales tax and increase tourism.
Okay.
So the schools was kind of establish things that didn't necessarily increase tourism for Prior.
Right. It basically paid for their hospitality, party rooms.
Yeah, and a lot of it was also, some of it was also for after-school waters or programs, like things the school couldn't spend money on legally. But I don't really know that according to the ordinance, if we should have been spending money on it either.
Right.
So it's, it's all good things. Like I said, it's all great things that we're doing with the money, but it's where the ordinances say that the money should be spent and is how the money was intended.
So then, changing the chambers' percentage around to the school really cuts aside.
That was kind of a compromise.
Inside scooping to get around cutting them, but they're still gonna get it for the same purpose you were wanting to cut it out for.
Yeah, and that's up to, if you guys wanna change the percentage, I'm not against that at all. Um, that was kind of a compromise we came to at the night of the meeting. Um, I proposed that we made it zero and kept the chambers at forty, because I think that is what the chamber does is their entire process is trying to bring people and business to the town to raise sales tax. So I didn't propose a, a cut to his, kinda volunteered that to
So.
Kinda help, uh, as a compromise with the school, so the school didn't go from ten to zero.
So why, why did you do that?
Well, I felt like that, and I understand where Dean's coming from, I understand where the board was coming from when it came to what the ordinances really said it was supposed to do, but this ordinance was put in place whenever the schools were probably at a time when they were struggling, and, and I know that Barbara was a big part of that, put this together, and so they were allotted that as proposed. Uh, but I also felt like that after the explanation was given by Dr. Muller that night, that there are some activities in there that do draw in, like big tournaments and things like that, that do draw people here. Uh, so yeah, that may be a hospitality room, and but it does support some of the after-school programs and stuff like that that draw people in here. It's not, it would probably fall under a tier one, based on the new tier system. So I felt like, and again, the second part of that is the relationships with the school. And so I felt like that the chamber, based off what we're doing. And then the other, the other thought behind this was as well, is this over the last few years, I've watched that fund go down because I received forty percent of it. However, we figured out what was wrong with that, and I think the resolution in the next line is going to be to have the state collect that so that we don't miss that. And if we're collecting that on a regular basis, I anticipate that money to go up. So as I looked at it from the chamber, I know exactly what amount of money I need to be able to sustain my operations and be able to promote tourism and all those things, so I felt like the thirty percent would be good enough for us.
So I wanna, I wanna just chime in, and I don't, I wanna be very, very clear. We're not here to discuss the financial status of any of these entities, chamber, Main Street, or the schools, especially the schools. But I do think it would be important to put out there the information that was presented by, by, by Dr. Miller, is that much like the city is regulated in what they can spend their money on. The general fund of the school has laws and regulations on what they can and can't spend, and so things like trophies for these, they cannot spend their general fund funds on those. They've been using these for those, the hospitality rooms, et cetera, and, and whatnot. So these are, are things, shirts for, for like choir, the choir groups and things like that. The school cannot buy those with general fund funds. They're, it is against the law for them, according to the school. So they have used these, these funds to supplement and offset those. The biggest thing that we hear, and again, we're not getting into the, to the weeds on the finances of the school, is, well, they're building this stadium. They're doing these things. Remind, the school is the avenue that we, the people of Prior, are building those. That stadium is using, being built by our tax dollars, by a vote of the people that voted to let the school build that using our money. The school doesn't have twenty-six million dollars to build a stadium with. They're, they're building that under our direction as people that voted for that, so we have to take that element out of there. There were things in there, the band days. Uh, Prior used to be big into band days, and that was a
That was a big revenue bringer.
But in the resolution, it said that part of their, their income from this was twenty-five hundred dollars to go to band days. And I talked specifically with, with Dean about that, and I said, if that's no longer done and the school is never revisiting that, then that probably needs to be removed. And the school agrees a hundred percent on those. So we're not just looking at what we perceive to be that the chamber has all this money, or, or the, the Main Street, or the school has all these funds. It's what these funds were specifically used for and legally can be used for. And so with that, um, I think, I think we, we don't wanna get too lost on, well, what are they gonna do with their ten percent? The idea is, is this money used to bring people into town and supplement those things that are gonna increase tourism and economic development? And so, um, I just, I, I, I think it's important to remember that it doesn't, we're not talking about how much money the chamber has. So, fair enough.
Yeah, I hope I didn't make that impression.
No.
I didn't take that one.
I didn't wanna make that impression about the school either, because I didn't say the school has excess money or anything.
I do wanna add that there.
The school doesn't, you know, they do have limitations on what they can spend it on, and what.
But the band day was cut out of this, right?
So one of the other things that we need to consider adding to this was brought to me, uh, to my attention today, um, is that we need to add to this resolution that the, the, the funds given through the hotel motel are to be reimbursed funds. They are not to be a handout, like a pay in advance. The reasoning behind that is, um, it's not that we don't trust anybody, but anybody ever try to go get receipts after the fact? Um, so, but also, if I grant somebody out and give them a blank check for five thousand dollars and they only spend forty-nine hundred of it, where's the rest of mine? And am I gonna get a check back from them? How do we facilitate that? Do we have the receipts? The, the logistics and the fluidity of this is it needs to be reimbursed, and it always has been, and that's worked well for everybody. So I would recommend that, um, we be able to add that back in to the, to the resolution.
Yeah, I didn't realize I took that out if it was in there or not, but yeah.
It's okay. Yeah, no, we just, I don't, I don't know if that was in there before, but we need to make sure that that's, that's made now.
And, and to clarify, all of this takes effect on the date that we approve this resolution today?
Well, that new allocation will be coming up in July.
Right, when the new
Fiscal.
New fiscal year starts, okay.
Yeah.
So that's why we kinda tried to do it early, so you guys could have it now. And whether you make changes to it or not, that's up to you, um, but we wanted to have it in front of you where you could have the majority of it done, where you could have it approved for the next budget.
And it also helps me as the chamber to be able to know how to budget for this next year.
Chase, add that in there. We don't need to send it back to them, do we? So we would need to amend our motion to accept the addition of that caveat.
Well, and the correction there.
Yes, and the allocation amounts.
So I mean, I, I made that motion, right? Yeah, I'll, uh, amend it to, yeah, I don't really see an issue with.
Thirty, ten, ten fifty?
Yeah, I mean, as far as the other ones, I mean, y'all already did the groundwork on that, so I mean, I'll amend it to, for the thirty percent to the Chamber of Commerce. And with the addition that these funds will be reimbursed rather than, uh, paid in advance.
Do you have the second on that here?
Trammell?
Well, I'll amend my second.
If no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Shawshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item C, second reading and possible approval of an ordinance amending city code seven dash four dash four camping.
Make the motion, waive the reading.
Well, yeah, we can waive the reading, but we do need to discuss, so yeah. Motion to waive the reading. Prove and waive the reading.
My second.
My second. Did you get those, Hannah? I'm sorry, I didn't say Shawshire and Breschers. Chase, you had a, a deal on there. You had called us and realized that that.
So about ten minutes after the meeting last time, I realized it, the mayor's, the last paragraph in there, for whatever reason, I put in, this is an emergency, this is clearly not an emergency, so I deleted that paragraph. Did you guys print out the new version?
Yes, we have the new version.
That's the only difference, is that last paragraph is removed from the one in the packet, because it's not an emergency.
Okay.
But this is the second reading, so you can pass it.
So if we vote yay on this today, it's approved?
No, do we still have a third? Is it just the second?
Yeah, the second approves, yeah. And then we publish and deal with that.
Well, I'm gonna say again, I think this should go to a vote of the people, so.
Further discussion on this? Can we amend the motion to remove?
I will amend that motion to remove that last paragraph.
Second.
Yeah, yeah, I'll amend my second as well.
There's no further, then we will have a call, call for the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shawshire?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, second reading and possible approval of an ordinance changing amending zoning classification from residential duplex to multi, uh, residential multifamily, RM, of the property as described as follows.
So move with the lady.
My second.
Gantier, so move, waive the reading of the description, seconded by Breschers. Is there any discussion on that? We'll call for the vote.
Breschers?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shawshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Okay, now, with the, when I was trying to jump the gun on, I apologize. First amendment, uh, first reading of an ordinance amending the, quote, city code of Prior Creek, Oklahoma by amending the definition of hotel motel in section two dash two A dash two.
So move.
Have a motion from Gantier?
Second.
Second from Bruce. I'm gonna give that to Bruce. He does never give one. It's all right. We appreciate it when you do. Um, I wanna share, this is where I wanna share that I was handed an email at four fifteen this afternoon. Um, I would like to recommend that we, at this point, uh, take no action on this. There's been some recommendations from the Tax Commission, um, in how we've written this. They're pretty useful. Um, with your guys' permission, I'd like to share this email with you. Just read it. Says, "Good morning. Uh, the first step is a review of your ordinances," and this is, for those that are not aware, this is us collecting, or us having the Tax Commission collect on the hotel motel, uh, tax allocations. And so they responded back and said, uh, and I'll send this to you guys after the meeting, so you all have a copy of it. There's, there's nothing in there. "First step is a review of your ordinances and changes that might need to be changed to allow us to collect it. If you please, if you can please, email me a copy of the lodging ordinance, and I'll take a look. Uh, I can see what's on mine. If it's the same copy, I'll still help." He goes on, says, "As usual, biggest changes are the first to the exemptions. They need to be exactly the same as state's sales tax if we collect it." So he's saying we need to make sure that that's all worded right in our, in our stuff. He goes on, he says, "So strike that section and state the exemptions are the same as the, as promulgate the Oklahoma state statutes for sales tax. In definitions, change it from three or more rooms to, quote, 'in which rooms are,' end quote." Take out the three. That way you get tax from places like Airbnbs that only have one or two bedrooms. Remove the permanent resident notation in quotes. It is not in your definitions, but if that's someone who stays over thirty days since the room remains sales taxable, we keep rooming taxable. Uh, no stopping due to duration of the stay. Tax out over the five dollar a day, or tax out over the five dollar a day mess too. Under the returns, the returns are due on the twentieth day of the month to the Tax Commission, not you. So maybe just an extra sentence if that contacted with the Oklahoma Tax Commission. State rules and due dates will be in effect. Some cities have just added at the end of the ordinance extra entry, an extra entry, that all ordinances in conflict with those of the Tax Commission for collecting and auditing defer them if contacted with us to collect it. The earliest we could start collecting it would be October first, the first day of the next quarter with the notification period. We need copies of your approved city ordinances before Jul- July thirtieth to get the October one date. So I also wanna let you know, if anyone owes you tax now, we can't collect it going backwards. Once we start in October first, it stays that, for it stays that happen from that point on, so.
In view of what the mayor just disclosed to us, I will amend my motion to no action.
Okay, so we just need to make sure that we're taking advice from the Tax Commission on the best way to write that. You were copied on that.
Yeah, what I'll do is draft, what I'll do is I'll draft ordinances basically reflecting what he said. I cannot imagine that being your job, being manager of the business tax services.
I will amend my statement. So.
Looking at that and having to write that email, it sounds awful.
So the first and the second.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's mind-numbing a little bit. So the first and the second have been amended to no action. We'll call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shawshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go back now to item four, the consent agenda. Um, actually, let's hit the addendum, and then we can just move down the page. Addendum item one, discussion of possible action to authorize Prior Main Street to apply for the TSET Legacy Grant to fund the completion of the downtown streetscape project, including intersections on East Graham Avenue from Adair Street to Hogan. The project will include updated traffic and pedestrian signalization, bump outs, ADA compliant parking and ramps, and permanent downtown lighting and sound scape infrastructure to improve accessibility, walkability, aesthetics, and downtown economic activity. The grant has a limited application window and requires no matching funds necessitating a quick turnaround. Have a motion from Gantier?
Second.
Second from Bradshaw. I'm gonna give it to her.
No, that's fine.
I just wanna make sure that everyone understands, this is something that came up very last minute, hence that it's on the addendum. Um, and as we, we found out, uh, this last year, TSET has minimized Harper, jump in at any time if I say the wrong thing. Uh, for those that don't know, TSET stands for Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust. Brownie points there. Um, that is not taxpayer dollars. That is money from the tobacco settlements, um, the tobacco companies. But TSET minimize, uh, reduced a lot of the counties in which they operate in, in the state of Oklahoma. With that, came a whole lot of funding that they had in their, in their wallet that they weren't using. Um, and luckily, Mays County is one of the five counties that is still, see, I did a little research on this on, so make sure that we, we were all on board. One of the five counties that TSET is still funding fully. Um, so we are very blessed to have that. We have Marty and Harper that, that maintain that. Arianna used to be a part of that for the longest time, um, and we do realize that TSET has been a big asset to us. What this is, is, uh, the legacy grant is the sum of that money that came from the other counties that got closed down. And that said, TSET has to spend that money, and so they've created a grant. Um, I don't wanna create something that seems like all the glitters and gold and everything, you know, is great, but this really is one of those opportunities where we would be, um, we would be really not wise to pass up. Here's how this grant works. Um, it is a minimum three million dollar application and a maximum of a hundred and fifty million dollar with no match. This is TSET saying, "We have to use this money. We have to spend it. You're one of the counties we're in." Um, Marty and Harper came to, and I know Bridgette had said some things, and we had talked a little bit about it, grumblings over the last couple of weeks, but it didn't really hit, hit until we looked each other in the face and said, "This has a deadline of June sixteenth." And for anybody that's done grants, you know. And for anybody that's done grants, you know that that is almost an impossible turnaround. But it's a three-page grant application in process, and so we sat down yesterday, we pulled it up. ETA, Main Street, TSET, Arianna was there, there were some other, we sat down and we said, "Is this something we can do? Is this something that we can make happen? What can we do with it? Three million is our minimum, can we knock out the streetscapes? Can we upgrade our curbs and sidewalks? Can we get these lights and highway signals that we're talking about, the pedestrian ads? Can we get all of these things included in there and be above three million? You better bet we can. We can do this. And then on top of that, the fact that there's no grant needed, or no, no grant match. And so as we went through and we did this, one of the things that we realized last night was, or yesterday afternoon was, that it will require council approval, just like Arianna's, to say, "We're on board with, with us going out for this, this grant." I think it would be a wonderful opportunity, especially since Marty and Harper's boss, who has a lot of control over this grant, said, "Why isn't Prior applying for this grant?" Hint, hint. So we're gonna apply for this grant, and we're gonna do it, given you guys give your endorsement to the opportunity. Arianna has been working on the grant narrative, and that, as of this afternoon, she reported is coming along great. We've been collecting and sharing information such as the quotes for the lights that we've been working with, Jared, from Signal Tech from last year, for all the upgrades. So all of those elements and things we already have in place, we're able to put together and throw at this because we've been prepared for it. We just need to get your guys' blessing and answer any questions you have on that. Questions?
The only question I have is, I mean, we wanna get as much bang for our buck as we can. This is, as far as I'm concerned, open-ended, anything that we can, that'll meet the description of what we can apply for. I'm a hundred percent favor of going for it.
So we've been very strategic in this, a lot of conversation is, it sounds great, but when you're applying for these grants, you don't wanna sound like the kid walking into the candy store and say, "Just give me everything." We are looking at things that we're already working on, so sidewalks down to our corridor, cleaning them up, the aesthetics of the buildings, finishing out the other, what? Oh, I'm getting sign language from Bridgette, so hopefully I'm, but looking at things like the aesthetics of the buildings. Can we clean that up in order to welcome people to come downtown and have that walkability, to want to go and shop our downtown? To sidewalks, bump outs, ADA compliant parking, and things like that, as well as traffic signalization throughout the city that links us all up. Bridgette, would you like to come say something? I finally figured out what it meant.
So to just help with Chris's question, some of this also requires engineering. We already have a firm through Kimley Horn that has worked on the first phase of the streetscape. And so while we, like you said, like, we don't wanna just walk into like a kid with a candy shop and just, because there's all kinds of things we could do throughout Prior, because we even thought, well, what about Bobby Buck? What about, what about restaurants? What about all this? But everything has to be engineered, everything all here has to be drawn out, planned out. And because we already have phase one of the streetscape, it's almost like copy and paste throughout downtown and some of the other intersections that we're also looking at. That makes it very easy, they can replicate that very quickly for us because of the tight turnaround. So that's another aspect of this grant, and why we can't just do anything and everything, but we can do still a lot of really good stuff.
Hey, we didn't have it before, if we get it now, I'm not gonna cry.
I've got a question.
Sure.
When you say bump outs, what does that mean?
Those are basically like the bulb outs at the intersections that help with pedestrian safety. So it basically forces cars to slow down a little bit at those intersections and allows pedestrians to be able to cross safer and gives like a little bit of protection, like, you know, if a car's up here stopping, then there's this bulb out.
Does that also take away parking spaces?
No. Well, so.
You're going, whoa, maybe, you're saying no, so.
Majority of, if you go and look, the majority of the spots that are designed to have bump outs already are not parking places.
This is true, they already have like.
Painted triangular spaces that are not parking, and that's where those bump outs would be.
So we do wanna increase some of the pedestrian safety and also accessibility for increased handicap areas, more handicap grounds.
So you're saying that in this proposal from your engineer, we will not lose parking places downtown?
I have heard ones from the engineer with Kimley Horn, that there will be a loss of two parking spaces in phase one.
And that's it? That, but this is gonna go all the way down Main Street to Hogan, so there're gonna be more?
While we know, but we also know through Bluegrass Festival, when we identified public parking spaces downtown, we have eighteen hundred public parking spaces downtown.
I'm talking about on Graham Avenue, I don't care about side streets.
Yeah, not, not just Graham Avenue. And the thing about us in small towns is that there is a misconception that if we cannot park right in front of a storefront, then there's no parking. That is, you know, that's, that's a misconception. I recently went to another towns, they were doing kind of like their downtown reveal, and they had a voting process for their proposed parking scenarios. One of them was all parallel parking, one of them was dynamic parking, and then one of them was no parking at all, it's only pedestrian down the street. I was like, that's bold.
Okay.
So I'm not saying that every single one of these will be taken away that one spot. I know in Graham Avenue, it is taking away one on each side.
Okay. I am in favor of applying for the grant, but I'm assuming that the design of this will all go through the street committee for council approval and
Yeah.
others involved in this?
Yeah, so it'll be treated just like the current streetscape has been treated, street committee will. You'll have, you'll have some, some, some view, time, some say on it.
But ultimately, the council will have to approve the final design, the final plan of how it would be.
Correct. So what we're doing right now is we gotta go out for the grant.
Right, and I'm for that.
We got like twelve hours left.
Yeah, this is, this is basically, you're giving us permission to write and apply for this grant because there is such a tight turnaround, because it is due the sixteenth. We actually would like to have it completed, our goal is this week, right?
Yes, the narrative should be done by Monday, but we're waiting, we have to wait for the budget from Kimley Horn, and then we can.
And just so everybody knows, Kimley Horn is the engineering company that has been working with us for four years now. As the engineering company that is doing everything we've asked and done, and they know every one of our icks, they know every one of our wants, they know what kinda trees we want. When we brought this to their discussion, they said, their, their engineer said specifically, "Yeah, this is copy paste, we can have it ready in about a matter of minutes." They are on board with what we want, they know, they already know what the streetscape going forward is to look like, what's expected, what the city wants. This is just an opportunity for us to take all of these projects and go, hey, maybe this grant will cover everything we wanna do and get it all done and funded. So there's not really anything new coming to the table.
Yeah.
It's just getting it all done.
At first, it seemed very overwhelming, and there was just like, there's no way we can accomplish this, but it was really our discussion last week with Kimley Horn, and then saying, "Yeah, we can have this to you in a matter of days." That was like, okay, that's pretty much a green light, let's get together and let's make this happen, so.
And then yesterday, that meeting of minds and realized, it is actually very doable, so.
Are the business owners and building owners along Graham Avenue involved in this discussion on the planning for this design?
So this design happened before I came along, so.
Well, I'm talking about from East to Hogan Street?
For the next phases.
Yeah.
From my understanding and my conversations and my relationships that I have built, everyone is very eager and for the streetscape project to ever get started.
So the, the plan for.
Well, my question is, are the business owners and property owners involved in the discussion?
They have been.
Yeah, this is, there's no new planning going right now, this is the same.
This is just trying to get the money to do it.
I know that, it's a grant, I'm fall for it. I'm just asking, are they gonna be involved in the design?
Well, there's no, there's no new, new design, so I guess I'm confused on the question.
Terry, can I, can I try to answer your question? I've sat in many of those meetings, even back when Jenny was there. Arianna, you were in many of those, and they were open to the public, to those people, everybody along there has been welcomed and invited to be a part of.
I, I am very well aware of that. You guys are, you guys are dodging my question. I'm not talking about the streetscape at the, the archway thing, I'm talking about the design of it going all the way to Hogan.
Right.
Which is something new, not part of the original one intersection.
Right, so when we got to hire Kimley Horn, there's an agreement that whenever they break ground in November, they're gonna be having regular meetings that the business owners can come to. And so the design essentially is the same that's happening on phase one. So if they do, as progress happens, if we land this grant, they can express their concerns or desires in those phase one business meetings that will be happening regularly. Does that answer your question?
No.
So I, I don't know what'll happen.
Phase one is Adair and Graham.
Yeah, that's phase one, there's seven phases.
We're talking about extending it on east.
Right, which has always been part of, which has always been part of the plan. That's always been part of the plan, along with many other parts.
Decision for everybody, we will make sure that they have input.
Okay.
Yeah, but I mean.
We'll make sure personally that they have input going forward.
But I do talk with downtown business owners weekly, and I get asked weekly, "When are we starting the streetscape? Why is nothing happening? Why is this? Why is that?" And the honest answer is, "Well, because we're working with ODOT." But.
All right. Well, thank you, Bridgette.
Yeah.
Because the question had came up to me from some business owners that are concerned about they're gonna be losing parking spots in front of their business, that's all, but.
Further discussion on that?
Yeah.
Gantier?
Yes.
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
All right, item four, consent agenda. We need to pull item C. Are there any others that you guys would like to pull? Okay, so I have a motion to approve all but item C.
Motion.
Jeez, that was fast. So I got a motion from Gantier and a second from Shropshire to approve A, B, D, E, F, G, H, I, N, J.
All less C?
All less C. We'll call for the vote when you're ready.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Item C, we need to add to the purchase orders, the one that was filed last week. Purchase order two, four, two, zero, four, two, five, six, two, for three hundred and twenty-three to Amazon, that just needs to be added to. And that's in the pile from there.
What was the handle called, Mike?
It was just questioning the purchases that were made and pulled to have a discussion about department head, that discussion was taken, so.
Please repeat that purchase order number.
Would you like to just have the sticky note? I will repeat it and give you the pickup, two, four, two, zero, two, four, two, five, six, two. There's no discussion further on that, and we can call for the vote when you are ready.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All right, mayor's report, item A, discussion of possible action regarding renewals for the City of Prior Creek Group Health Dental. Vision life, short-term disability, loss of disability coverage plans for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, as presented by Brown and Brown.
Motion.
Second, we have a motion from Choya and a second from Gantier. Mrs. Britton? I almost said Mrs. Houston, and I'm sorry about that.
I get lots of that kinda thing all the time, so I'm all right. All right, well, it's getting late, and I talk a lot, so I will be very brief, but open to any questions you have, they're all up here. So we started with a fifteen percent renewal on the health insurance, negotiated down to eight, plus adding in discounts for a total package renewal of all of the benefits at a five percent increase at the end of the day. One of the questions, which I was doing some math, Charles for you, was, "How does this increase impact actual employees out of their paychecks?" So the family tier, individuals who have themselves a spouse and at least one child, on the base plan, which is the least expensive, that cost out of their paycheck will go up a hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. That's the tier that is impacted. All of the others, it's like two dollars, a dollar seventy. And then on the buy-up plan, which is an option for employees to spend more to get a lower deductible, et cetera, that family rate goes up ninety-five dollars and eighteen cents. So I think that's probably something that, you know, just be aware of, and maybe, I'm not telling you what to do, but open for discussion if you want to. But all in all, the city's budget would stay the same on your health insurance if you didn't impact or change, decrease what the employees are paying out of theirs, because you just pay a flat defined contribution. Regardless of what the premium is, you're paying X amount every year, and the employee picks up the balance, if there is any balance to be picked up. Does that make sense? There are some changes on the plans themselves, co-pays for doctors' visits are going up anywhere from five to ten dollars each visit. The out-of-pocket limit on that buy-up plan, the more expensive one, is going up by two hundred and fifty dollars for the year. So all in worst-case scenario, if I had a horrible car accident, large claims, my expense for my individual claims would go up two hundred and fifty dollars for the entire calendar year. So it's a small change, but it's still a change, so impacting claim costs a little bit for employees and their families, plus if they do have a family on the plan, the money that's coming out of their paycheck is to buy in to have it.
The main thing is it started out at fifteen percent, and you negotiated to five percent.
Yes.
You've taken ten percent away, that would've been really detrimental.
Yeah, good news.
Real good news. So I wanna make sure everybody else is aware, some of the things that we've talked about, and I'll try to not be too long-winded on this, but I think it's one of those things that is important to talk. One of the changes that we're making, as Hannah's come in, we've had discussions with Jennifer and some of the other entities, whether it's comp source and those, what, is that the employee participation amount throughout the city on these programs, albeit retirement, health, has been pretty, pretty lacking. And what we attribute that to is that in the past, the informative meetings and the, the meetings where we tell them about the insurance and give them those updates have not been mandatory. And so, what did you say, the one year was like, four people showed up? Something like that, it was minimal, I don't remember what the number was, but it wasn't, it wasn't the full gamut of employees that are taking this. So we're going to make sure that all of the employees are required to be a part of this informative, what's going on with the insurance, what's going on with retirement, what's going on with workman's comp, so that they all know where we stand, where it is, what the impacts are. We're also looking into programs like the Insure Oklahoma.
Yes.
You wanna give a real quick on that one?
I will.
Why that's something we're looking at?
Yeah, so Insure Oklahoma's been around, law that was passed years ago, again, tobacco tax settlement money was funding, is funding this program. It was intended for small businesses, it's grown now to large businesses, up to two hundred and fifty employees. Essentially, I think of it like a coupon for your health insurance. So it pays sixty percent or more, depending on the individual's household size and income ratio, of the cost of the health insurance. And that money comes directly back to the city's bank account in a ACH deposit every month. So, and then for spouses, if my spouse is qualified with me, the state pays eighty-five percent of my spouse's cost. So it's huge dollars, even if really only one or two employees and their spouse may qualify. It's money on the table that we're not taking advantage of. It was strong with the city years ago, and I saw this with all of my customers, where the number of people who qualified for the program started to dwindle down over the last four, five years. But that was because the increases on the income charts, those increased every year just a little bit in April. They weren't really keeping up with the spikes in pay increases that we saw around COVID. You know, people, I mean, even. You know, people, I mean, even me, like, we were jacking up salaries, right, just to keep employees. And so that's leveled out now, and I think it's time, we've looked at the census of employees, how many family members we see that they have, and I think we've got some folks who would qualify. You've also, you know, had some turnover, where you've hired people with less tenure, possibly at a little lower, more entry level rate. So again, it helps the city, it helps the employee. The other thing it helps about the member, the individual employee or their spouse, is the state will pay them back up to nine hundred dollars a year for their claims cost. So to help with deductible and all of that, if they have, you know, a thousand dollar deductible, they're gonna get nine hundred dollars of it back from the state, put right back in their bank account. So it's great. I mean, it's all this tobacco tax settlement money helping. So that's what that's about. It's gonna take thirty days to get the application. We did confirm that the application that was in place before has just been deactivated. It's been a couple of years. So we'll work with Hannah to get that in place, hopefully by July one. The other thing we're gonna do, just to be a little more proactive, it's been a few years since we've done a Medicare education event. So we'll bring anyone in who is near the age of Medicare, so sixty-three up, or their spouse, if they are in that range as well, with a Medicare specialist, it is not me, but we'll make sure it's a certified Medicare specialist who's come in before and did a great job. That way they understand what their options are. I know we're kind of nearing that age. We're starting to get stuff in the mail all the time, and it's overwhelming. You know, when you get it, and you just get trees and trees and sacks and sacks in the mail. So it's just your resource the city can provide for free. It's their decision. You can't incent or force anyone off your plan, but you can sure educate them and help them understand what might be best for them. And then if they do want a Medicare, it's a win for them, it's a win for the city. Otherwise, the other benefits, the only one that had a little increase, the dental, it's a three percent increase, so it's like a dollar per employee going up. That's inflationary. The rest of all the benefits, life, disability, all staying the same. So really, I mean, there was a lot of work leading up to this, obviously, the committee, we had really long conversation about it, but that's the nuts and bolts of it. Our, I just always like to remind you two, our compensation at Brown and Brown, we're on a fee versus commission. So whenever I have that in place with a customer, I like to be, I'm always transparent parent about our, our compensation, but I, I'm proud that we can say, we are not compensated more just because your premiums went up. We stay the same. We're not doing any more work, right? It's not any harder today than it was a year ago. So our, our compensation will stay the same.
So also, we had found this, we talked in the ordinance insurance meeting, that our average age of our employee is actually down to thirty-one.
Yeah, thirty.
So that's a new demographic for the city. Typically, we've had a little more seasoned. So part of the direction, and we've talked about the insurance ordinance, talked about budget and things, one of the things we want to do is make sure that our younger employees know that we're gonna do everything we can to invest in their future as well. So that's why you'll hear going forward, making sure they understand the retirement plan, making sure they understand that if they are on a lower, a lower salary, that, that qualifies. Not shamelessly well, but just one that qualifies. There's ways for us to get them some, some compensation, some, some help, some assistance. Making sure that we've, we've discussed with Brown and Brown also health incentives, wellness programs and things like that. So there's a lot of discussion going on about those programs that haven't been really pushed in the past and we're pushing those now. So I want to thank Jennifer for her work and for her team and the, the time that they put into doing this for us every year.
Did you say there's also a chance that if the employee wanted to, they could take Aflac?
Yes, they do have Aflac offered. They also have identity theft protection service and the med, emergency medical transport, so they can't be bound to bill for any air or ground ambulance that maybe insurance doesn't cover. So those fifty thousand dollar flights to Tulsa from here, if you have that massive benefit, you don't have to pay any of that balance after insurance pays. So that's optional. They can buy into all of those. Yeah, you offer a lot of benefits. They, I mean, it's a really robust, well-rounded package that people can choose from, and there's good participation, and they, they do use them, they do buy them. So, and as you know, we've talked about this, municipalities often do offer really rich, really expensive benefits because it offsets the lower wage base that oftentimes municipalities can pay. So it's, it's always a little more savvy to increase benefit as an employer expense versus maybe increasing hourly rate of pay, which is taxable and has all of those four-wheeling, or retirement plan implications and all of that, too. So, pretty, pretty standard stuff. These are the best Blue Cross Blue Shield plans on the market. It's the lowest deductible that you can get, so it's a good, it's a good benefit. Way better than mine. We have seventeen thousand employees, and yeah, our deductible is not that. Not that.
Further questions, comment? I'm going to, we will call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith? Lamar?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, discussion and possible action regarding an expenditure in the amount of seventeen thousand, four fifty-one to reimburse municipal utility board for the purchase of upgraded radio communications equipment for the street department to be paid from FEMA reimbursement account one, four, one, four, five, five, oh, two, seven.
Motion.
I got a motion from Gantier and a second from Shropshire. Discussion? Call for the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Jared, thank you for sitting here for that.
I'll just answer any questions.
We appreciate it. All right. Item seven, committee reports. Budget personnel.
We're still on the ten.
Ordnance Insurance.
I'm waiting for you to let me know.
I'm gonna put, to be determined, but we do have some things that we need to bring up before the next scheduled one. Street Maintenance.
Twenty-fourth June.
All right. Unforeseeable business. I do have one item of unforeseeable business. I need to recognize the resignation of employee, I might get this wrong, Floyd Allen Null from the golf course. He gave his resignation today, so we'd like to thank him for his time and his service without having to make a delay in that, so. One more.
You sure we don't need an executive session just because we always have one?
Nope. Nope.
Choya, storms are coming.
I withdraw that.
Just under storms. So do I have a motion and a second to accept that?
I'll make a motion to accept his resignation, recognize his resignation.
I have a motion from Breschers and a second from Gantier.
He's going, what do we say?
Call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
We'll go call the order. Oh, let's adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion from Breschers, second from Gantier. Call for the vote when you're ready.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
All right. We'll go ahead and call to order the Pryor Public Works Authority meeting. Approve the minutes of the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Motion from Gantier and a second from Breschers. Discussion? I'm sorry.
Gantier?
And Breschers. Ready to press the vote?
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw? Breschers?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
All right. Item three, approved claims for purchase orders for the Pryor Public Works Authority through June third, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion from Gantier, second from Breschers. Call for the vote when you're ready.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Breschers?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
I have no unforeseeable business, so I have a motion to adjourn. Motion from Gantier, second from Breschers. By the way, all we're showing is severe thunderstorms right now. All right. Call for the vote when you're ready.
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Yes, adjourned.